Extra buck, if there's not, it's really good reminder. Yeah, okay, it's.
Let me go get you a paper one?
No, get a paper, I can go get a paper agenda. It's the clear, it's totally like.
Oh.
Listen, I lost my place eight times.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have to read it off the paper one too when I do it.
Okay. Go ahead and call the meeting to order, agenda item A, roll call. We call the parole please.
Danielle McKenzie, here. Jason Blair. Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb. Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Okay, I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, see, there's a proclamation declaring July as Parks and Recreation Month. So I will read this on behalf of the mayor. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of the communities throughout this country, including the Moore Parks and Recreation Department. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviate illnesses such as depression, efficient deficit, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing popular, providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designated to promote active lifestyle. And whereas Parks and Recreation is the leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education. And whereas Parks and Recreation programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth, sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development. And whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, and retention and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And whereas our Parks and Recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of the community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas Moore, Oklahoma recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now, I, Danielle McKenzie, on behalf of Glenn Lewis, Mayor of the City of Moore, do hereby proclaim July as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Moore.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, two, as a consent docket, item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held June 5th, 2023. B, receive the minutes of the regular Parks Board meeting held May 2nd, 2023. C, reappoint Kelly Maddox and Janie Mylum to the Parks Board for a three-year term beginning July 1st, 2023. D, approve the renewal of the agreement for the FY 23-24 with Signal System Management, Inc., in the amount of $17,520 to maintain communications and monitor traffic signal operations at various intersections within the city. E, consider authorizing a payment of $39,158.29 to the Oklahoma Municipal League for Services for FY 24. $19,579.15 to be paid July 2023. And $19,579.14 to be paid January 2024. F, grant an easement located in the northwest quarter of Section 35 Township 10 North, Range 3 West to Oklahoma Gas and Electric, also known as OG&E, to provide service to the new animal shelter to be located at Sky 35 and Southwest 34th Street. G, accept a 25-foot permanent easement to Maisoli LLC and Sunny Lane Investors for construction maintenance. The southeast lift station, Gravity Sewer Line, located on the east of Sunny Lane Road and north of Indian Hills Road. H, accept 445 square feet of temporary construction easement from Eastern Metcalf LLC for construction of the Eastern Avenue Phase 2 project located on Eastern Avenue and Southeast 4th Street to Northeast 9th Street. I, accept 245 square feet of temporary construction easement from Tower Storage LLC for construction of the Eastern Avenue Phase 2 project located on Eastern Avenue from Southeast 4th to Northeast 9th. J, expect to accept 280 square feet of temporary construction easement from Club Car Wash, Moore Southeastern LLC for construction of the Eastern Avenue Phase 2 project located on Eastern Avenue from Southeast 4th Street to Northeast 9th. K, approve the city manager's employment contract. L, reappoint Marlene Wood and Bill Jones, the Moore Urban Renewal Authority, for a three-year term beginning July 1st, 2023. M, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2022 and FY 23 in the amount of $3 million, $30,000. I'm sorry, $3 million, $30,657.37.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, will you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes. Item three, consider approving amendment number two in the amount of $284,179, increasing the guaranteed maximum price to $7,919.36 for the construction management at-risk contract with Crossland Construction Company, Inc., adding a livestock barn to the new animal shelter facility.
Counsel, this increases the guaranteed maximum price for the contract for the animal shelter. The increase is for the construction of the livestock barn and the purchase. And this increase of $284,179 covers all of the costs that are associated with adding the livestock barn. We would ask that you approve the agreement.
And we're still under budget because it was 8.2, is that what we went out to the voters with, is that correct? So we're still well under budget, so.
In the event that the chickens were to come back and we were to allow it or vote, will this barn house chickens?
I'm sure it would be able to.
It could be.
It could be utilized, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, will you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item passes. Four, consider adopting Resolution 51-23, authorizing the city manager or his designee to submit a grant application to fund construction of the telephone road, which is the southwest 34th Street to south of the city limits project.
And this just simply, as it says, authorizes us to submit a grant for, in coordination and in conjunction with the City of Norman, you can score a well if you have more than one agency or community. So we're submitting our half-mile of telephone road from southwest 34th Street to the city limits, and this just authorizes us to do this.
So will the funding that the grant applies, will it pay for all of it, or will that?
No, the funding, I'm sorry, yeah, the funding is a, it's a, I believe it's an 80/20, yeah, it's a matching grant, yeah.
Okay, all right, motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, will you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item passes. Item five, consider approval of the FY 23-24 contract with the Moore Public School District for the provision of eight uniformed school resource officers and one police vehicle for which the city will receive 65% reimbursement. The officer's salary and benefits and 65% of the cost of the vehicle in the amount not to exceed $592,054.68.
Counsel, this is just renewing an annual SRO contract with Moore Public Schools. The Moore Public School system has reviewed this and their school board has signed off on it, we'd recommend approval as well.
I would make a motion that we would approve. Second.
We call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item passes. Item six, consider rezoning application, number RZ 1031, located in the southwest corner of Section 27 Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being north of southwest 34th Street, east of Santa Fe Avenue, from C3 General Commercial to C3 PU. Worked for us of use, General Commercial District, for personal storage and approve ordinance 16-23. Application by TWD Properties LLC, David Box. Planning Commission, recommended approval, 7-0, and this is Ward 3.
Thank you, this item was tabled from last meeting, and items six and seven are companion items on your agenda. Since it was tabled at last, the last meeting, the applicant has provided some traffic count numbers for similar facilities that he operates, and those are on your sheets before you. And those include a daily traffic count and then one that is just an after-hours traffic count. Other items that the applicant has provided is a more detailed site plan that shows landscaping, buffering from the Blue Stine Ridge addition to the east, as well as some drainage improvements that would be made. The applicant is here, if you have any additional questions of him, if you have any questions?
We got a text from Jason and he said he gets all his concerns resolved. I do have one question, where is the office for the mini storage unit? One document showed it in a specific place, and I don't see it on the documents tonight.
David Box, 542 Call Core Drive, here by the applicant, do you mind if I?
No. Right there, okay, that's where, that's where it was on the last one, it just was a bigger space.
Sure.
Thank you. That's all my questions. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, will you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item passes, and I do appreciate the applicant reaching out to everyone that had questions, that was helpful. So, item seven, the companion item, consider approval of the two lot splits located in Oak Ridge, crossing north addition, being north of southwest 34th Street, east of Santa Fe Avenue, application by TWD Oklahoma Properties.
And this lot split application would actually split off that lot for the mini storage and create one additional lot for future development.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, will you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item passes. Item eight, consider approval of ordinance number 1031-23, amending Part 12, Chapter 5, Article 8 of the Moore Land Development Code by adding Section 12-539, as-built construction plans divining data and attributes required to be submitted to the city and establishing an option to pay a fee in lieu of as-built construction plans.
Counsel, the GIS update that was approved some time ago is now complete, so we have our GIS data up to date as much as it can be today. And during that time, I've been looking at some of the challenges that we have in getting as-built data. And I've identified two, actually there are two separate issues, which is ordinance addresses. The first is that we do need to collect more storm sewer data to satisfy DEQ's Stormwater Quality Program. We are currently collecting public storm sewer data, but we're not collecting private storm sewer data, and there is a lot of private storm sewer. And that's important because sometimes you'll have private storm sewer that leads into public, that then goes back to private, even though it's a connected system. So we really need to know exactly where storm water is going. This ordinance, the first part of the ordinance does define exactly what attributes we would need to have in as-bills. The second issue is why some, it's still a challenge to actually get the data that is importable to our system. And I know that's something that counsel was interested in getting solved. So, in looking at some of the challenges, I've really narrowed them down to two separate issues. One is that the CAD techs that you work for the engineering firms may not know exactly how to do it. And even though we do provide step-by-step instructions, if you're not, you know, an expert level, you may not know how to do these steps. We have spent a lot of time with some of our engineering firms who do a lot of work with the city to show them exactly how to do that. And it is successful, once you do that training, the issue that we've ran across is that there's so much turnover that it seems like you're always training. So that was the issue number one. The issue number two, which is a little bit harder to solve, is that sometimes an engineer, engineering firm becomes unresponsive, especially in commercial projects that might take a year or longer to complete. This might just be because they have other projects and they are on to the next, you know, bigger fish to fry. Or sometimes they go out of business, which I think has happened once or twice since we've started this process. And unfortunately, the construction manager and the owner of the project don't know what to do or how to solve that problem. So, in working with our contractor to do the historical GIS updates, they were able to put some hours per project and determine an average cost, if you will, per project of sending someone out, collecting the data, and then inputting it into our system. So, I think that the best way to ensure that we do get the as-bills for either of those problems that we're running across is providing a fee in lieu of option. And this would be an option that the owner or the engineer could select if they, you know, would like just to pay a flat fee to the city, and then we could send our contractors out there to collect the data. This would be a great option for those times when the commercial projects might not have a responsive engineer. Because again, the construction management company and the owner want to comply, they just don't know how. So, in looking at the kind of fees that we're looking at, they're actually not astronomical. So, we would propose, and you'll actually see this next meeting, if this is approved in the fee schedule, we would propose splitting up the projects into small, medium, large, and commercial and residential. The small projects would be $2,000 would be the cost for us to send out a contractor to collect that data. A medium project would be $3,000, and a large project would be $5,000. Our contractor did not see any projects that we had that cost more than $5,000. So, you know, I would propose that the council pass this ordinance, and then the next council meeting, we would have the fee schedule update. And we can certainly come back and amend these fees if they're too high or too low. But I think that this gives the regular person who is just trying to do the right thing, an option, a way out to get our data that we need and to get them to close out their project.
No, I think this is a very creative solution. I make a motion, we approve.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, will you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item carries. Item nine is consider the approval of the contract for MSR Design Gardener Studio for Phase 1 of the Architectural Design Services for the new public library.
Counsel members, this is the, this will be Phase 1, this project is, if approved, will start in November. The design work for Phase 1 will be completed sometime in the spring of 2024. The fee for Phase 1 is $235,000, this is contained in our budget, recommend approval.
I make a motion, we approve.
Any discussion, or do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion and a second, will you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item passes. Item 10, consider amendment to the contract with SJ Innovations LLC, doing business as computer system designers, to provide security officers at the station.
Counsel members, I would make a request that we table this item until the next meeting, still waiting for some contract language to be worked out.
Make a motion, we table item 10.
I second the motion.
A motion and a second, will you call for the vote to table it?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item 10 is tabled. Item 11, consider approval of a lease agreement with Spark Brixton LLC in the amount of $7,500 per month for lease of real property located at 815 Northwest 12th Street to be utilized as a satellite office for the Moore Police Department.
Counsel members, the construction on this refurbishment of this building will start sometime this summer. If approved, we plan on being able to move in towards the end of the year, this calendar year, December or January. This will be a great thing for our police department and help with the safety of the community, recommend approval.
Okay, so this is just for the lease, we'll approve the remodeling and stuff later?
Any of the fixtures and stuff will come later.
Okay, all right, make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, will you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item passes. Item 12, consider modifying the Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual by eliminating the cap for comp time earned for exempt employees, providing for twice-a-year buyback provision down to 80 hours and a one-time buyback for exempt employees down to 80 for the pay period, ending June 17th, 2023.
Counsel members, this addresses the exempt employees that are unable to earn overtime and when they get capped out at their comp time. This provides a mechanism to buy back some of that time, but not completely deplete their time if they were to need it for other things. And on a going-forward basis, the way this is structured, we won't, we wouldn't have this issue again, recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, will you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item passes. Item 13, consider renewal of a contract with Trifecta Communications for marketing content production, beginning July 1st, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2024.
Good evening, counsel, this is our 18th year with Trifecta Communications as our in-house, but out-of-house digital media consultant, and just very happy with the work that he provides us. Rob Morris, of course, is the principal that we work with and have now for about 11 of those 18 years, so recommend approval.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, will you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item passes. Item 14, consider renewal of the contract with Dotman Graphic Design, Inc., for website development and website maintenance, beginning July 1st, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2024.
Thank you, counsel, this is our ninth year with Dotman Graphics. We had a brief hiatus, we were with them about four years, brief hiatus, and back with them now for about the third year. Again, very, very happy with the product that he provides. Just easy to get in touch with, 24/7 almost, if we need any assistance with the website, very fast website. And I provided some data, this is our Google Analytics from our last three years, and this is the last three years, again, that we've been with Dotman. And I would have gotten this in your packet, but Google is making a transition with their analytics, so we just barely got into the new. But just very, very happy with the growth of the website and the usage, and again, always looking for improvement and open to hearing your feedback and residents' feedback, and we can make a change like that if it's warranted for that. Very proud of the numbers, I think one of the telling pieces of data, users by device, 75% of our users are on their mobile phones. And of the 24%, a good majority of those would be your employees. So, we kind of know that our residents are probably using it, almost to the, close to 80% of our residents are using that. So sometimes our desktop presentation may not look as flashy or have as many photos running through it, but we want to keep the speed and the data and the download very quick, very fast, you know, super accurate, and make it very readable by the phone so that you can pick up your phone and read all of that text right there in front of you, not have to scroll up and down and sideways. Happy to answer any questions that you have tonight or in the future.
Done any comparisons number-wise for visits and stuff to any other cities?
I've not, no, as far as just users, yeah, great point.
Totally curious.
You bet.
Is to, I mean, like Midwest City.
Yep.
They're very comparable in size.
Exactly, no, that's a great point, and we would love to do that.
I don't know if they would be willing to have that conversation with you or not.
I think they would.
But it might be interesting.
Absolutely, and of course, it would depend on who runs their website. And again, we're, I'm very proud of the fact that ours is a publicly sourced CMS, so that if anything were to happen with our web developer, we own all the content. We don't have to go out and look for a new company revamp, redo, we just find somebody else that can come in and work Drupal, basically. But that's a great point, and yeah, I would love to ask those questions and make sure we're comparing apples to apples.
Do you also know, I would be curious, by device, what people are searching?
Yes.
Well, like by device, like, are mobile users more likely to search about the station than they are about something else? I don't know.
Well, I think.
You might not be able to break it down.
I don't know if we can break it down to that, but I'll ask.
I would, yeah, I would just be curious if you could.
It's so deep, it's just unbelievable, really, and, but I would love to know that as well. So yeah, any of those things that you guys want, I'm going to kind of make a laundry list here and a to-do list for him. So, by device is the search terms. You know, we've got, we've pulled a lot of information, of course, our top search terms are jobs, trash, the station, basketball, pay a bill. And Danielle, we had a conversation about paying the bill, and hopefully it's front and center now. Didn't make a separate button, and again, those announcements that are at the very top, we want to make sure that if somebody's just going to the homepage to pay their bill, we want it to be handy, but not so handy that they miss those announcements that, oh, by the way, a major street is closed, or something to that effect. So hopefully those are right under there so they can still see it quickly and get to it.
Your top 20 pages has to tell you that a little bit, when four times the people find what they want on the front page, or they figure out they're not where they need to be and they leave.
That is a great point, we are really proud that the number of pages by user is actually going down, and that means that they're not having to, you know, click around. So I hope we're getting a lot better, our search is just really becoming more intuitive about what they want to find. So, but again, open to all suggestions and just anything you have, we want to.
The website's great, I use it, I utilize it a lot, and I mean, I can always easily find things, and so I think it's awesome.
Well, thank you for that, and also too, the referrals from social media, that's another big piece there. And of course, as social media becomes ever more difficult to maneuver and embrace, we'll say. We know that those referrals are coming in, but we want our website to be the place that residents go to and that can find the most accurate information that they possibly can. We'll use social media to get them there, but it'd be great just to go ahead and start there first. So that's what our goal is, is to not have to rely on social media to get them to the website.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item passes.
Thank you.
Item 15, consider, and if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a vice mayor.
I'd like to make nominate Councilman Mark Ham as vice mayor.
I would second that if he accepts.
Yes, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, okay, item passes, congratulations.
Thank you.
Item 16, consider the appointment of Councilman Mark Ham to serve as a member on the ACOG Board of Directors, Intermodal Transportation Policy Committee, Garber Wellington Policy Committee, and the 911 Association Board of Directors, with the remaining city council members to serve as alternates.
Yes, yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, will you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item passes. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Recite the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item 17, to consent docket, A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held June 5th, 2023. B, ratify action of the city council regarding modifying the Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual by eliminating the cap for comp time earned for exempt employees, providing for twice-a-year buyback provision down to 80 hours and a one-time buyback for exempt employees down to 80 hours for the pay period, ending June 17th, 2023. C, is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 22-23 in the amount of $1,496,387.31.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Okay, motion and a second, will you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item passes. Item 18, consider, and if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a vice chair of the trust.
I would nominate Councilman Williams.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion and a second, will you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
I'm staying.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Point of order, we have to have four votes for this to pass, do we not?
Yes, sorry. Yes, sorry.
Okay, item passes, thank you.
My bad.
Nineteen, consider an if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a secretary of the trust.
I would nominate then, Council, McKenzie?
Yes, that works. That works.
Second.
Second, okay, motion and a second, will you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes, item passes. Recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item twenty is a consent docket. A is to receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held June 5th, 2023. B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 22 and 23 in the amount of $65,862.10.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, will you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes, item passes. Twenty-one, consider an if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a vice chair of the Moore Risk Management Board.
I would nominate, uh, Councilor Williams.
A second.
Okay, a motion and a second, call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes, item passes. Twenty-two, consider an if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a secretary of the Moore Risk Management Board.
I would nominate that one.
A second.
Okay, a motion and a second, will you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes, item passes. Recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting.
Call the roll, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair? Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Lynn Lewis? Adam Webb? Mark Ham?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here. Item twenty-four is a consent docket. Receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held May 15th, 2023. B, receive and approve the minutes of the special budget study session held May 15th, 2023.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes. Item twenty-five, consider an if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a chair of the Moore Economic Development Authority.
I would nominate, uh, Councilor Hunt.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes. Item passes. Item twenty-six, consider an if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a vice chair of the Moore Economic Development Authority.
I would nominate Councilor McKenzie.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes. Item twenty-seven, consider an if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a secretary, secretary of the Moore Economic Development Authority.
And I would nominate Councilor Jason Blair.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Forgot somebody.
Danielle.
Yes, yes.
This time we'll recess, that item passes, this time we'll recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
Okay, item twenty-eight is new business. Item A, citizens for items not on the agenda. No one signed up to speak. Would anyone like to speak? Okay, item B, items from the city council or trustees.
The, uh, work on eastern north of 12th, appreciate that, it was a good job on everyone involved. It was pretty extensive and, and the crews did it rather quickly. I know it was quite an inconvenience for a bit, but it's a lot better now. So appreciate all, all of the staff and whoever made that happen.
It was a big improvement.
And then, Brooks, I just had a question about the traffic light or the device that was struck by lightning. Was that what it was, a board or something?
Yeah, the processor, yes.
Is there, and this may not be practical, and are we able to have any of those on, in stock in the event that something like that happens again so that we don't have an intersection without the?
That's, that's a question that's being asked.
Okay.
The only thing I had, I know that we've had some pretty bad windstorms the last few days, and I noticed there was already a crew out, I think, Friday, cleaning up trees from Thursday night.
I think that was OGN E cutting all the trees, right?
Is that along eastern?
Because they whacked them all like halfway down the?
So this was over near Veterans Park, and I think this was our stop. I noticed, I thought it was a city truck, but I, I wouldn't swear by that.
Along eastern where OGN E went and they're all laying.
I wanted to mention that we got, uh, got to participate in the grand opening of the curb, and that was well-attended and a very cool event, so it was nice.
I missed that.
Yeah.
Is it, how is that, is it full?
It's full, yeah.
Yeah, it's full.
It's fully occupied, wow.
There was a list.
Wow.
And the facility looks really nice, it does. And the park looks good, and I've, I've been impressed all along. I've been a bird dog on this thing since day one, and it's, I wasn't sure we were ever going to get there, but it was, it's very nice.
Good.
Good. Okay, item C, items from city trust manager.
Couple of things, the tree limb pickup will start tomorrow and run through next Tuesday, so encourage residents that have tree limbs that need to be picked up to have them out by the curb. Obviously, if it becomes a bigger chore than what we anticipate, we're willing to make adjustments on that. And we are still scheduling just a week out on the big trash pickup, so that's going well.
That's good.
All I've got.
Okay, item twenty-nine is executive session. Section 307 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. Is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. A, consider approval of the fiscal year FY 23 to 24 contract between the city of Moore and the IAFF Local 2047 as authorized by 25 Oklahoma statute 307B-2.
Make a motion that we convene to executive session.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. We call for a vote.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes, okay, we are convened to executive session. Okay, item C is reconvene from executive session. Item D, do you have a motion on?
I'll, I make a motion that we approve, um, the IAFF Local 2047 contract.
Second.
A motion and a second, will you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes, okay, item passes. And thirty is adjournment.
So move.
Second.
Okay, will you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes, we are adjourned.